Okay. J.J., you ready?
We're ready.
Okay. I will call to order this special work session of the Board of Trustees for Tuesday, October 15, 2019. And Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Absolutely.
Dr. Madam Clerk.
Okay. We'll begin with Trustee Calvert. Trustee Caudill. I think he's joining us later perhaps?
He is absent for this session because he got called for jury duty.
Oh, that's right.
But he will come when he is finished with jury duty after 5:00 P.M. And he apologizes to everyone because he knows this is very important.
He's doing his civic duty though.
He is.
So that's important as well. President Simon Holland.
Here.
Trustee Kelly.
Here.
Trustee Minneto.
Vice President Raymond.
Here.
Clerk Taylor, I am here. And our student, Student Representative Nathan Noble.
Here, Madam Clerk.
All right. Thank you. Madam President, we have a call.
Thank you. Student Trustee Noble, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have a public comment? Jeff Church. Mr. Church, welcome.
Good afternoon. A long time no see. I've been on vacation spending the kids' inheritance. For the record, my name is Jeff Church. I run a website, renotaxrevolt.com. And I've also been very involved in the homeless issue, so that's had a lot of my time. But having been gone, I'm not sure of any updates, but my understanding is you still don't have an auditor for capital projects. That's been recommended by the Chair of the Audit Committee and many other people. There have been a lot of discussion on that. And I just urge you to consider an auditor, probably in-house, for the capital projects. Later today, under items, I believe it's 4.6 to 4.8, you're talking about, and actually I think I'm wrong, it's 4.07, more money approved, $230 million for capital projects. That's WC1 money, and that's the other property taxes that we pay. And then the same thing under 4.08, more money. So, $230 million, please, you've got to be able to get an auditor to look at that. You can't tell me that a competent auditor couldn't find some kind of waste, fraud, abuse, better spending, suggestions, ideas on how to save millions of dollars. So, what's an auditor cost? $100,000, $200,000 in-house with pay and benefits? And I guarantee you, they will pay for themselves over and over by finding, you know, areas to save money, waste, fraud, abuse, et cetera. So, maybe it's been done. My understanding is there was some kind of a spot audit that was done, but that's not adequate. We need an in-house auditor, full-time, to look over this money, $230 million just here. And, you know, as you know, WC1 never ends, so we need to have somebody to look at it. We need a watchdog. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Church. And just for the record, we do audit capital projects, and just like we audit the entire organization and received a clean audit from our auditors and Government Finance Officers Association recognition, so.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, J.J. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay. Motion by Dr. Taylor, second by Trustee Minneto. Is any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We are on to the substance of our work session, which is discussion and possible action to retain the professional services of one or more search firms and/or consultants in support of the superintendent's search process and authorize staff to enter into a contract or contracts not to exceed a total amount of $100,000 with one or more of the following proposers: The Bryan Group, Hazard Young &amp; Teia Associates, MacPherson Jacobson, LLC, Carney Sandown Associates, J.G. Consulting, and Ray &amp; Associates. And our Chief Human Resources Officer, Emily Ellison, is here to walk us through preparation for our interviews.
Yes. Thank you, President Simon Holland. Good afternoon, trustees. I just want to first express my appreciation for you being available for this additional time today. I know that you all know how important this work is, and I also am very sensitive to the fact that you have very busy schedules. And so, I appreciate you making time to be here for this, for the presentation opportunity. NRS 332.115 allows the district to purchase professional services without the use of a competitive bidding process. And at prior meetings, we discussed what that would look like, and it was the consensus of this board that we would go through a process to ask potential firms, or firms who are interested in supporting the superintendent's search, to submit proposals for your review in open meetings. So, that's what we're here to do today. As a part of that process, I sent the information on the opportunity and what information we would need as a part of those proposals to 45 vendors from a number of different sources. We did, obviously, a lot of searching to determine who works in this space and is experienced in superintendent searches. But we also had referrals come in from our contacts at school board associations and through the Council of Great City Schools. Like I said, we sent the opportunity out to 45 vendors. There were six proposals that we received back in response to that request, five who wished to support the full superintendent's search process, and one who was interested in proposing support of the stakeholder feedback process. We invited all six to present to you today, so obviously, that's a very tight timeline for the number of proposers that we have here and an opportunity for you all to ask questions. And as a part of preparing for this process, I've been working through verification of references for the firms who submitted proposals. I think what we discovered as a part of that process are some things that were probably not unexpected. In addition to contacting the references that proposers gave to us as a part of their materials, we also did some online searches to see what we could uncover related to the firms who submitted, and also related to the individuals who are identified in those proposals as potentially supporting this work for our district. Not a lot was uncovered related to individuals, nothing that concerned me that I would want to share with you all. When looking at the firms, of course, those firms that are the larger national providers who facilitate a significant number of searches each year had a good deal of positive press. There were times that there were negative reports regarding different boards' experiences with those firms. Nothing that was particularly alarming or that seemed out of the ordinary to me based on the volume of work that those firms do. And then one other thing that I looked at for the report, the negative reports that did came up, that did come up, was did the company, did the firm, list that district as a reference in their proposal, right? So, essentially where they tried to hide something. They really weren't. By and large, when there was a current report of some kind of concern or what I would categorize as negative news coverage, the vast majority of those districts were included in the company's references. So, I reached out to those as well. In your packet, you have a couple of important documents, and the references that I've been able to make contact with so far are included in there. There's one page for each firm, and you can see a little bit more about the strengths and areas of opportunity that those references mentioned as related to each firm. Let's see what else. So, the order of operations for today, like I said, we do have a very tight timeline, and in order to be sensitive to making sure every presenter has adequate opportunity, we are going to set the timer, and that will help to keep us on track, I hope. Two of the six firms will be calling in to give their presentations, the first two, and we've done quite a bit of work, J.J., and John and I, in trying to avoid any technical issues with that. So, everybody say a little prayer, cross your fingers, do whatever you need to do. Those proposers have been instructed to call in at their designated time, and then to drop off the line, but to remain available in case there are questions at the end that are specific to their firm. And they're going to be watching. I believe we are broadcasting online, so they'll be watching, and if we need to call them back and have them rejoin us on the conference line, they will be available to do that. The other presenters are here. They said they were going to be here. I hope they are here.
They have them in East College.
Perfect. They are here in another room. And then we will have them come in in person, and I'll try to help monitor to keep us on time. In your packet, you also have two versions of a note taker. So, Nathan, can I borrow yours real quick, just so I can give a little tour here? They have the same content on them, but you can use them however you would like. So, the one that is the portrait orientation is firm-specific. So, you have one for each firm, so you can make notes accordingly. And then the other one, and this is what we use during interviews too, is side-by-side comparison. So, like I said, the content over here is the same on both of these documents. You don't have to use both of these documents. You can use one or the other, or a combination of both, depending on what works for you. But these are a part of the hiring process record, so I will need to get these back from you at the end of this process today.
Emily, if I could just interject.
Yes.
I was just talking with council about whether any notes we take are public record. And council's argument is that they are not part of a public record. I just want to let trustees know that someone may try to argue that they are part of a public record, so just wanted everyone to know that as you're taking notes.
Yes.
But our position is that they are not.
And the practice of gathering that information back like we would during interviews or other hiring processes is consistent with what we do district-wide regarding selection. So.
So, if I may?
Mm-hmm.
Then, so as we're taking notes on these, if we give them back to you and we would like, we would like to keep our notes?
Oh, thank you.
Or we would like that we can get another, just get a copy back from? Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. The other thing that it's important to know about those note takers is I put some kind of guiding questions in there. It is not going to be possible for us to ask all of those questions. So, some of that was to guide reflection. I know you all have had an opportunity to have the presentations in hand and to review them, and so some of it may be your own notes and impressions from that process, some of it may be things that the presenter covers. If there's a gap between those two things, then there may be an opportunity for you to ask questions too to help fill in the gap. But there certainly was not an expectation in developing that document that we would have an opportunity to ask all of those questions of every presenter. Those are really kind of guiding, thought-provoking questions, if you will. All right. We talked about how each presenter has been allowed 15 minutes, and so they've also been given an overview of the process today. This item is to determine whether or not the board would like to move forward in utilizing one or more of the firms in support of the superintendent's search and authorize staff to negotiate a contract. There were some questions about the typical cost of a search like this, and in reaching out to the Council of Great City Schools, the estimate that they provide is that a superintendent's search will generally cost anywhere between $60,000 and $120,000, depending on the size of the district and the scope of the work being performed. With this information in mind, as I was developing the board item, I really looked at the proposed maximum from each of the vendors, and there was a fair amount of difference in the pricing proposed. And so, I looked at the highest and then added a little bit for expenses and set that amount at $100,000. That is not to say that we have the intention of negotiating $100,000 contract. You'll see that some of the other proposers came in much lower than that, but we really needed the language in the item to give you all the latitude to select the firm that you think is the most appropriate. Of course, we'll work with Andrea in purchasing when these decisions are made to negotiate the most favorable contract and contract terms for the work to be done. And then, I believe we are ready to get started. So, are we already dialed in?
Great. Emily, before we kick off, I just want to thank you for the tremendous amount of work that you have done to pull all of this together, both developing the requests for proposals and reaching out, 45 solicitations for folks to respond, and then reference checking.
Thank you.
Google searches. You've done a tremendous amount of work, so we really appreciate that because we know you've been, you've had a lot of other things on your hands.
Well, thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate you saying that, and I'm glad to be able to help.
Very thorough.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. Then, we will begin with Dr. Bryan.
Yes. So, our first presenter is The Bryan Group. Dr. Bill Bryan is going to be presenting along with his colleagues Suzanne Corchats and Keisha Taylor. And can they hear me if they're on? Dr. Bryan, are you on the line? Hmm. All right. Not yet. I'm going to, oh, there we go. Good afternoon. Dr. Bryan, is that you?
Can you hear me?
Yes. This is Emily Ellison.
Hello, Dr. Bryan. This is President Katie Simon-Holland of the Board. Can you hear us okay?
Good afternoon. Dr. Bryan, is that you?
It is. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you, but we're getting an echo now that we have to figure out, but we will.
How about now?
We hear you fine. It was, okay.
It's a little light on this end, but I'll keep it close to my ear.
All right. Thank you for, thank you for being with us today, Dr. Bryan. Just as a reminder, if you have the broadcast open on any of your browser windows, please close that so that we don't.
No, I've closed all browsers.
Okay. Great. Excellent. And then we are going to stick to our 15-minute timeline. We're using the timer that we use for public comment as a part of this process, and so at the two-minute mark, you should hear a beeping sound come over the line. That'll give you an idea of where you're at in terms of time. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you.
Okay. Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
First, my thanks for myself and the team, and if Suzanne and Keisha, if you'd say hi.
Hello, everyone. Mr. Taylor calling from New Jersey.
Welcome.
And this is Suzanne Corchats calling from Connecticut.
Great. Welcome.
Okay. And then today, I'm calling from South Carolina. So, once again, thank you very much for the opportunity. Happy to chat with you. What I'd like to do is kind of partner with you on this, in that I gave you a very weighty proposal, as you know. There's lots of information there. So, I'm assuming everybody's read it, and I'd be more interested in hearing your questions. So, I'm just going to top-line those things that I think are important and maybe differentiate ourselves from others who go about this business. And I would ask you just to jump in rather than wait at the end if you have questions. Does that process sound okay?
That sounds fine, and I'll just ask trustees to raise their hand if they have a question, and we can call on you. Okay? Go ahead.
Okay. So, let me start with, in terms of just real quickly, some of the things we've seen strength of our approach and our team is that we're highly responsive to our clients, both in terms of the activities and the costs involved. There are a couple places along the way where, even though we gave you a proposal, that there is an opportunity to look at some flexibility. For example, when we have the situation of doing sourcing, I put in a number on sourcing, but we're happy if it takes less time to bill less and put down, provide you with a not-to-exceed figure, because we only work, only bill for what we do. Other key point is that I am local, even though I am in South Carolina today, I live in Inklings, so having that presence and be able to respond is there. One of the things that is really key to us with our concern for diversity is to be able to remove bias from the evaluation process, and what we're going to be presenting is by far the most objective and bias-removing process that you'll find. So, any questions on that before I move forward?
Questions, trustees? Yes, Dr. Taylor.
If I don't hear anything right away, I'm just going to.
Yes, we do have a question, Dr. Bryan. Dr. Taylor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, President Simon-Holland. Hi, Dr. Bryan. This is Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
I'm interested a bit in the process you use to eliminate bias.
The process used is multifaceted, and I'll get into more detail when we get there, but the primary thing is that you have to create really, really tight, specific criteria, such that there's, you take as much intuition out of the process as possible. And that comes through role proficiency criteria, competency criteria, leadership criteria, and derailers. Those are the failure factors, and making those absolutely measurable in the assessments that you do. And then, the only other way of carrying that forward is to use the guided storytelling interview process. That's the only thing that really gets to the heart of the matter of what people really bring to the table.
Thank you, Dr. Bryan. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So, other high points, inclusivity, as you saw, we really believe in getting as many people as possible in the community, because we see this type of an opportunity as a real community-building opportunity. And we don't look at it just as community-building in terms of the amount of inclusion. You saw that we suggested students, and even to the extent of having a student intern team be tasked with us for the whole length of the project. I just finished a project that was a downsizing, rightsizing project for a district where students did exactly the types of things that you're seeing here that we proposed. They were guided in creating community interview questions, focus group questions, designing a survey, doing research, and pulling it all together. So, can be very powerful. So, capacity building for the committee, for the board, we're recommending a search committee as well, which is separate, not just a subcommittee of the board, and so forth. Any questions on that?
Questions? Dr. Bryan, this is Katie Simon-Holland. I was very impressed with the additional tasks that you proposed, one of which is building a good search committee. I thought that was a very helpful strategy and very helpful approach, so kudos to you for that. And I think that's something that we still have to make decisions about at this table. We haven't, we haven't fully determined the role of the search committee, but just wanted to compliment you on that, on that task.
Okay. Thank you. If you don't have a good foundation, you're not in a good position to really be efficient about the process. So, we always make sure that we do that. We also, part of our philosophy is absolutely technology transfer, even to the idea of how to create a high-performing team when we look at a search committee or the students or whoever's part of it. So, you know, good consultants work themselves out of a job as fast as they can. It hasn't been uncommon for people to leave when we've done a search, saying, guess what? We're going to take the forms and all your advice, and we're going to go use this with our principles now. And that's great. That's terrific. Next, so we've had inclusivity. We've, we're talking now about high-level stuff. I'm just going to go real quick, stakeholder input. The only really difference, I think, that would be here is than what others might be saying, because it's pretty common, is making sure that we're responsive to exactly what you want and adjust our approach to that, and when we do it. The only thing I'll say, but I wanted to save it for a little bit, is that when we do interviews or we have students doing interviews, we teach them how to do the guided storytelling interview, which is very fundamental to getting really high-quality data. Any questions on, specific to stakeholder input?
Any questions? So, I know in your proposal, you have, you have the district staff being one option to do some of the work under your guidance, and then the other option is to have you do all of it. And one of the things our Board decided early on is that our poor district staff probably doesn't have the capacity to execute a lot of those tasks, because we're just a very small staff and we are still scrambling to get teacher vacancies filled.
I think the issue there would be if we have a search committee, and we can go up to 12 to 14 people with external folks and everything else, all along for the whole process, not only is it training students, it's training the search committee to do the data gathering and so forth. So, it wouldn't necessarily be tapping people who are already overly stressed and have too much on their platter, if in fact, those people we can bring on the search committee to do that.
Okay. Good. Okay.
I'm going to jump ahead if that's okay.
Yes, please.
The creation of performance criteria is absolutely critical to this whole process, and I'll just give you a snapshot here. When I got out of college, I spent four years in the Army and then got a doctorate in clinical psych and spent about nine years in that. When I decided to change jobs and careers, basically, I was looking at business, and I had the great good fortune of being hired by a fellow by the name of David McClellan. And David was the head of the Social Relations and Psychology Department at Harvard, and was considered one of the world's absolute top competency and motivation researchers. I worked for him and his team for about four years and really cut my teeth on how to understand performance, because what we would do is study superstars versus average performers in different companies in the military, and then create competencies. And competencies here are defined as of, not as typically you would use the term competency in education, but competency in the sense that a competency always reflects a top-performing attribute. And so, we would create models of top-performing leaders based on their list of attributes and build HR systems around that. So, that's where we cut our teeth and have done a lot since then. So, when I talk about in the proposal, getting criteria, it really comes out of that, although with a lot more refinement since I worked with his group, of how to make measurable role proficiency, competencies, leadership style. And one of the other things that's often missed is derailers, which are failure factors. You can measure those as well. You can have somebody who's a superstar in a lot of other things, but it only takes one derailer factor to make them unsuitable for a job, and you really want to get at that. And the other key thing is, so those are the areas of the performance measures, criteria we're looking at. We want to make sure they're detailed and measurable, back to Dr. Taylor's question earlier. And we want to make sure it has predictive validity, and that all this competency research and having done it for 40 years now goes into that, and the ability to say, this person has the right stuff, and we'll be able to show it in certain ways. We don't skip over things like experience, credentials, what accomplishments they've had, but it's those other criteria and how we get at whether they have the right stuff or not that's really key. Any questions before we move on to the next topic?
No questions, and you have about four minutes left.
Okay. Then, candidate recruiting, that's a fairly standard thing. If we've really got to find somebody, and your timing isn't ideal, because most of the people looking for a job that are active candidates have, are back in the fall. So, because the recruiting will be done after the first of the year by the timeline, then we're probably going to have to get some real recruiting and research that goes into those folks who are passive, and we would go out there and look for folks who are doing a great job and see if we can tempt them into coming into our show. Let's talk about screening activities, critical, given the time that's left. So, we have the set of criteria, and we use that set of criteria and put it into a standard candidate scoring form that we use with everybody. And so, as you noted, we do something unusual, I think, in that we use the same criteria to take a look at a global level at the leadership team, and what are their strengths and limitations? Because at the end of the day, when you're making a recommendation, you could have a couple really qualified people, but who best fits with the team, given an asset deficit approach to who's got the right stuff. So, we start and we train everybody on how to screen applications, do short interviews, do a real long interview. It's three and a half hours long. And in that, what we're doing, whenever it's face-to-face, along with references, reference checks, is done with guided storytelling. And that's where you literally get people to retell things that are critical. For example, if I were being, I were the subject of guided storytelling today, it could be, before you picked up the phone, what were you feeling? What did you say? What did you see? Recreate the conversation for me. What happened next? So, you have to operationalize what people think, feel, and do if you're going to be able to measure them against the specific criteria that we've already created, and that's the one-two punch. Measurable criteria, very detailed, and guided storytelling is the way to surface it, and it's the most powerful tool you can have, and it's used in many, many ways. I've been using it with social-emotional study of kids as well. Any questions there before we're getting really to the end?
I have a couple of questions that I wanted to ask, and they're not necessarily on that topic. I did want to ask, have you actually done superintendent searches? I know there were head-of-school searches, but where have you actually done superintendent searches?
Yeah.
I knew this is a new LLC for you.
About 18 months ago, the head of the School Board Association, who was an attorney in New Hampshire, came to us and said, asked us to do any searches that came to them. So, the full, I had supported searches in the past by teaching people guided storytelling, showing them how to do performance criteria, specifications, but I had never done soup to nuts, so decided that I really would like to do that. So, we did soup to nuts and have started that in New Hampshire. We did two that were finished last March. We've got two active searches in New Hampshire that are going right now. These are all superintendent, and a third one pending. The other search that's going, which is a full search, is for the Tahoe Expedition Academy in Truckee, and we're helping them with head-of-school, so it's not. These are all superintendent and a third one pending. The other search that's going, which is a full search, is for the Tahoe Expedition Academy in Truckee and we're helping them with head-of-school. So it's not superintendent, but it is very specific, very unusual and pretty high level.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then another question that I had for you quickly. I noticed that there, yours was one proposal that did not offer a guarantee and typically some of the firms that we looked at offered a guarantee that if the superintendent that we hired did not work out within two years or whatever the time period was, that they would do a search for free.
Yeah, that's a very fair question and I wish I could have answered it better. And it's a financial issue, given that we're a new company. We can guarantee that with fidelity, fidelity, we will do everything possible and that if it goes outside of the contract range, that we would certainly do a significantly reduced fee to keep going. And we will do multiple rounds within, if the first set of candidates doesn't work, we'll do multiple rounds within that, that time period. Give us a year or two and give us a cash flow that gives us a lot of surplus and, and we can certainly, you know, do a search second time round if a person doesn't fit, but just practically speaking, right now I can't make that guarantee.
Okay. Wanted to clarify that on the record. I want to give you a chance to finish. We're, we're running over time now and I know we might have other questions. So let me let you finish your, your high points that you wanted to go through.
The other thing that, a couple of things real quick. So when we get to the recommendation of the board, we will have looked at all the feedback from all the screening in terms of meet and greets, application screening and all of those things. And hopefully the search committee and students have been part of that whole process. We make the recommendation to the board, it's in the context of the leadership team evaluation. Then what we hope, because we think it makes a big difference, is that we get engaged to do the transition planning for the new superintendent and the board. And that starts with a, with a talk-through of what are the expectations of the board and vice versa. The thing that's really nice is when a, when a superintendent has gone through this process and we have all the documentation, they have a very specific, very legitimate and valid performance appraisal. So when they walk in the door, they have a PD plan and you know exactly what they're going to do, what their strengths are, and you work with the, with the board and everyone else to get clear expectations and work on expectations because we've done the leadership team evaluation of what everybody's role is and what competencies are expected. The last, very last thing is that bringing it full circle, which we hope you will do, we would have students come back at the end. We would do a student evaluation, give feedback. If it's an internship program or looked like an extended learning opportunity or whatever, we would be looking at your rubrics and giving feedback for the students so that they can get credit or whatever. And then we really recommend that students do community presentations on their experience so that, you know, the word gets out there. It's, it's part of the community building process again. And that was the last thing on my bullet list.
Great, great. And we, we have a student trustee who sits with us and he's, he's smiling at that opportunity. He thinks that's great. He's nodding. Trustees, do you have questions? Questions for Dr. Brian? Just as one trustee, Dr. Brian, I was extremely impressed with your process and I, I think it's incredibly thorough. I, I was concerned about the newness of your firm and I noticed that you don't have a stable of, of recruits, which I know takes a while to, to work up. And how will you overcome that, that you don't already have recruits?
Well, I have, I do have eight people on board now. If you, if that's what you mean by recruits.
The candidates, candidate pool.
I'm hiring four more that are specifically, most of those folks are East Coast, different states, but I will be hiring four more in the local area shortly. And we've been going, they're all, you know, superintendents, teachers, like if you read Suzanne and Keisha's background, very powerful educators and successful. And they're going through extensive training as we go through this process of how to, how to do every one of these steps.
The, the question, I probably didn't say it correctly, it's, it's building the candidate pool.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Well, we follow the same process everybody else does, but we don't have a pool. But keep in mind that keeping an active pool is really hard. It's something we're going to do. We will never have an active pool any more than 300 to 350 and that will be started as soon as our website gets out there. And we will be vetting people at a very high level. They, they will have to actually apply to us as if they're applying for a superintendent position to see whether they're a fit for the pool. And we will give them feedback on whether they are or they are not, or what they have to do to, to make a good fit. Because after 40 years of studying superstar leaders in different areas, we've got a pretty good idea of what it takes to, to do lots of different jobs well. One of the things I will say is we've got a network. I was talking with someone last week who preliminarily, thinking about it, hasn't, has been in many high-level positions and said he's looking and he's somebody that I would be introducing. So our networks, the fact that I'm still in two companies, one advisory and the Center for Secondary School redesign, but we have over a thousand people on our mailing list that we get out to people and I'm not at all uncomfortable in terms of being able to source really top candidates.
Okay. We're, we're really short on time. Dr. Taylor has a question for you.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Brian, just in noticing that the experience that you've listed, as well as that, that you spoke of, I noticed that you haven't, either you didn't include or you haven't had a lot of experience in this part of the country. And certainly it's going to be a national search, but I'm wondering about your, your resources and your network in terms of attracting candidates, not just on the west, on the East Coast, but also on the West Coast or this region or anywhere in this, this part of the country.
Yeah, fair question. I'm not uncomfortable. For example, the last several years, we have run showcases in San Diego at High Tech High of top-performing middle schools and high schools. And the work at CSSR has been nationwide. I think probably we've worked in at least a third of the states as far as work. I did work in Napa. So, you know, we're in touch. And as a matter of fact, we've got an innovation group that, that we work with that has the associate director of design thinking from UC San Diego on it, as well as a couple others from the West Coast. So, you know, we've got our finger in a lot of pies and a lot of contacts.
Okay.
Thank you.
Trustees, any other questions? Okay. Well, Dr. Brian, thank you so much and thanks for being a citizen of our fair county. And I believe your grandson is a student at Incline?
I am really, really behind Washoe's success. And, and as you know, my grandson is at Incline High.
Yep.
So you have my commitment fully.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to have to close now, but thank you so much and we appreciate you putting so much thought into your presentation and your proposal to us.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Bye-bye. Bye-bye.
Bye.
All right. Our next presenter is from Carney Sando and Associates. He'll also be calling in. And this proposal is to support the stakeholder feedback process as a part of the, the search. The presenter today is Barry Rowland. And Mr. Rowland, are you on the line?
Did we lose him?
I texted him a moment ago to let him know that we were running a little long if he, if he got on and he was like, what's happening?
Emily, was it your picture that we would give them 15 minutes and then ask questions? Because that, this is, it's hard to get everything in.
It's very condensed in this timeframe. Yeah. And we've got a little buffer at the end, which would eat up our deliberation time.
Oh, there he is. Is that you, Mr. Rowland?
I am. Can you hear me all right?
We can. My name is Katie Simon-Holliday. I'm the president of the school board and you are live on the air.
All right. Good. Well, you're, I can just barely hear you. As long as you can hear me, that's important.
We can hear you. I'll, I'll go right up to the microphone for you.
Okay. Wonderful. Well, I know you're, you've got a time limit and so let me just cut to the chase and, and move as quickly as I can. I want to first of all apologize for not being able to be there in person. I know how important that is and thank you for your flexibility in, in hearing me by, by conference call. It's not always easy with all the technology. My proposal, as you know, is designed to address an important piece to your search, the groundwork or foundation, if you will, for search success. It'll better allow you to be clear on what leadership competencies you're going to establish for candidates. It'll provide you with material to develop questions pertaining to fit for the position, very crucial, crucial and critical. And by involving your stakeholders in the district in a meaningful way, it better ensures success of the eventual appointee who has a direct tie-in with people who he or she will be working with. So in the time I have, let me highlight some of the critical steps in the proposal and provide some specific details. The proposal, proposal is designed to provide support, as I mentioned, by laying the foundation. It's a historical model that I've used. I come from an educational background, superintendent of schools in one of the school districts in Toronto, Canada. We had 35 schools, one of the most diverse multicultural cities probably in North America. One of my responsibilities was strategic planning for the district. So I use this model with schools and with district representatives in order to get at the strategic planning initiative. I've also been involved in leadership with Carney Sando since 1999, along with other firms. So I've conducted independent school, charter school, district superintendent searches in the past, probably over 150 at this point. Almost all of them have started with a stakeholder input model in terms of building their search. In my experience, really the way to ensure a successful search is based, not on personality traits, it's doomed to fail, but on issues and challenges facing your school or district over the next five to 10 years, then building your process, including identifying and selecting candidates on that information. The issues and challenges can be best identified by your stakeholders within the district or within the school since it provides you with that important information to identify job expectations. But most importantly, it involves your stakeholders in a meaningful way, hence ensuring that success that I mentioned earlier. Specificity and transparency are key in implementing a model of stakeholder participation. And I mean by that, it has to be very clear why you're doing it. It's a responsibility, accountability of the board to select a leader, but they need as much input as they can get in order to make the most appropriate decision. And that's always the position that, that I take and we take on this. The model I use kind of brings together representatives from various stakeholder groups in your district in a highly participatory, attractive, dynamic, interactive workshop setting, one hour per setting or per session that affords sort of extensive opportunities to exchange ideas, opinions and prioritize those ideas in a, in sort of a short period of time. So it's a bottom-up and top-down process, if you will. And although it's developed from broad general questions, there's a considerable amount of analysis takes place so that the raw data that we get is developed into a written report that'll compartmentalize issues, trends, challenges and the themes for your review and for possibly identifying then the best candidates who can match those particular expectations and meet those challenges. So the raw data can also be used in a very unique way and that's to give you a snapshot of the organizational health of the district and that would also be included in the report. In my experience, the written report that you get from the workshops can be used in several interesting ways. First, you can develop questions of leadership competency and fit. Both of those have to be married together clearly for candidates to respond to in writing or verbally. Secondly, it provides a document for finalists to speak to in terms of their background and experience in addressing these key issues. What have they done in their, in their careers that address the things you need? It'll be helpful in assessing and evaluating your candidate skill, background and expertise. One of the things it's used for is for evaluation on the job of a new appointee. So you can develop what I always call key task performance review model out of this that the board and the superintendent can agree to in terms of, of job expectations and evaluation. And finally, it will be helpful in evaluating the progress you're making if you have a strategic planning initiative. If it's already in place, how far have we gone? Have we accomplished certain things? And are they still becoming issues and challenges in the district? So where are we? Is there a disconnect in all of this? The workshops themselves, we set up participation number of 60 per session for the best interaction. And going along with that, it's important to say that any report we get, we always recommend you circulate that for information, comment, opinion from those who weren't part of the workshop session. So everyone has an opportunity to see what was developed and make their opinions known and, and give comments. So you've got exclusivity and transparency. Let me take you through what a, what a one-hour workshop looks like very quickly and give you a sense of, best I can, of, of how we can put it together for your district. First of all, the individuals all come together in, in one area. Let's, let's use the number 60. They receive a worksheet and a set of numbers right off the bat. The worksheet has a focus question. In order to make the Washoe District the best it can be, what should we continue to do because it's, it's meeting that objective? What should we start to do because it would help to get us there? And what should we stop doing because it's not very helpful in, in making this the best district it can be? So you've got stop, start, continue. Candidates brainstorm, they fill in their, their worksheet at the one-pager. They rotate through three rotations and the, all the flip chart paper that they've written on goes up on a wall for what I call dot-mocracy. Every candidate participant gets five gum dots and they go up to the paper and they identify in their mind what are the foremost issues and challenges that, excuse me, have to be addressed. And so in an hour, we've maximized and valued each participant's input. We provided equality in prioritizing data. There are no talking heads. It's a one-hour. It's a simple arrangement of nine to 12 tables with chairs, maximum wall space to put up flip chart paper. And within an hour, we've accomplished and, and more than many meetings I held for two or three hours that were very unsuccessful with the same people talking. No one else had an opportunity to get, get a word in and then they left disgruntled. This eliminates that whole thing. Let me sort of conclude by the key question. How do we apply this to a district the size of yours? And so, and, and ensure effective representation. So what I've done, have done is looked through your district, your organization. I may not be totally accurate, but it'll give you a sense. I think there are six major internal stakeholder groups. You've got your schools with teacher, non-teaching staff, you've got parents, you've got school administrators, principals or assistant principals, you've got district leadership team and you've got central staff in, in a number of departments and of course students who should also be part of this. How do we, how do we do it? Well, I think, for example, when I looked at your schools, I think you had 60 elementary, seven charter, 19 middle and 16 high schools, or something along that line. If we brought one teacher and one support member from each of those schools together, we could run five sessions that would cover a fairly detailed representation in terms of the people coming, coming to be participants. Parents, the same, same thing. We probably, your elementary and charter group could go together, your middle and high school, they have a closer symmetry for a couple of sessions. Your principals or assistant principals, the numbers there would look like two sessions. District leadership, we could probably do in a session. Your central staff is, is, there are a lot of people, so we'd probably run two sessions. And students, generally your middle and high school students really give good information on, on what they feel and that's important because that's your client base and there'd be a session there. So you're looking at probably a dozen sessions, one hour each, probably over two or three days, giving us an opportunity as well while you're there to start to develop the report because it'd be fairly extensive. So what you've done- So, what you've done is you've brought in good representation. The fact that you get a report that would go out to anyone who wasn't there provides inclusivity in terms of people having an opportunity to see it and give their comments, if any. So, in summary, I guess the process that I'm talking about is really best done at the beginning of a search because it lays the foundation, or very close to the beginning. It's really a genuine encouragement, I guess, of input from the grassroots. It shows a willingness of the board to involve and value stakeholder input. The transparency in actually building the search is obvious in terms of building it on the input you've received as well. So, hopefully, I know I'm a little under the time, and I wanted to be certain to cover as much as I could, but that gives you a bit of a thorough overview, and I'll stop there and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rowland. Trustees, any questions? We certainly do intend to have a very robust stakeholder input process. We do a lot of that work now and certainly appreciate that perspective very much. Trustees, anything else? Okay. Is there anything else you would like to add, Mr. Rowland?
No, you may wonder why I didn't put in to do the entire search. It's very unusual that I would do that, and that's simply because I have committed to a number of searches currently, and I will not be getting on I can't give 100% to. Certainly, the stakeholder piece is intense that can be done over, you know, a period of intense time, and it's very important. And I think the very fact that you may have considered that as a piece of your search is why I really put it in. So, I do understand that, you know, you likely want to have a complete search done, but this was so important to me and so successful in what I've done that I wanted to lay it out there.
Great, yes, we appreciate that, and thank you for your honesty in not committing to something that you can't give full availability to. That's certainly a concern to the trustees, so we very much appreciate that. If there are no further questions, we don't have anything else, we thank you for submitting, and we appreciate the great process that you are recommending. Thank you, Mr. Rowland.
Good. Thank you so much for your time, and have a wonderful afternoon.
All right, and I see that you are a former professional football player in the Canadian Football League. That's pretty cool.
I did, yeah. We're a little different. We have different downs and all this. You probably know all about that.
About it, yes. Thank you, Mr. Rowland.
Well, it is what it is, I suppose. Thanks again for giving me your time.
Okay, thank you.
Indeed. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay.
President Simon-Holland, before we move on, I want to answer a question that we had between the last two presenters. So, we have about 15 minutes time at the end. It is a very aggressive timeline with two hours available and six presenters. If we need to eat into that 15 minutes, we can. While not ideal, there's a little bit of a buffer there, and, you know, worst case, if we need to push the item to the next meeting or you wanted to have follow-ups with particular presenters or something like that, I'm sure that's something that we could entertain.
Okay. I believe our next presenter is here, so you can introduce.
Great. So, Hazard Young Atia Associates has submitted a proposal for the full search process, and the presenter today is Mr. Hank Jimmetro. And I'll turn it over to you, Hank.
Are you Emily?
I'm Emily. Nice to officially meet you.
Those are for the board.
Thank you. I'll pass them out.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon to everyone. My name again is Hank Jimmetro. I am the chief search associate for Hazard Young and Atia. And just a little bit about my background in the firm, and then we'll talk about the search process. Lifelong educator, former special ed teacher, regular ed teacher, principal, assistant superintendent, superintendent in one district for 13 years. And then, for the last 10 years, I've been working with Hazard Young Atia for about half that time as president, and the last couple of years as their chief search associate. And I've done about 50 searches over that period of time, from a district as small as 100 students to a district as large as LA Unified at 650,000 students. So, bit of a difference, but some things are similar amongst boards regardless of size. So, and my co-facilitator, Hank Harris, couldn't be here today, but he's an educator and worked for a long time in the HR realm for school districts and has done a ton of recruiting efforts as well. And we will use other associates as appropriate depending on the kinds of tasks and activities that you decide as a board as part of the search process. So, if we need people who can conduct session, community sessions in Spanish, we have associates that can do that for us.
Oh, great.
And so, we'll encourage those people to participate in the process as needed. HYA is one of the longest existing and really well-known national search firms in the country. We've done well over 1,200 searches over the last 30 years for superintendents. Over half of the council of great city schools have used our services over that period of time, and 44 of the largest 100 school districts in the country have used HYA at some point in time. So, we bring a great deal of breadth and experience to the search process, but operate on a very simple but important core belief, and that's about the fact that this is your search. We have a process that we're, I'll share a little bit, a 30,000-foot overview, but the reality of it is searches have to be customized to meet your needs as a community and as a school district. And you'll need to make some decisions as a board as to what pieces of the search process you want to have happen, how you want to organize those things. And if you select this as a firm, we'll work through all those issues at a planning meeting to make those kinds of decisions. But, it's important that you realize that when we work with a board, our goal is to have you be delighted with the service that we provide and to help you select who you believe is the very best candidate for your next superintendent. And we have a lot of strategies and information and processes that can help you gather the appropriate information. We'll talk a little bit about those as I overview the process. But, I do want you to know that even though we've done a lot of searches, no two have been identical, so they do need to be customized. One of the things that I shared with you is one page out of the reams of information that we sent to you. So, I thought I would focus on just basically the overview, the flowchart of the search process, and give you maybe a 30,000-foot perspective on what the phases entail, and then to try to hopefully leave enough time for questions that you may have because answering your questions is the most important thing that I can do for you today, I think. When we look at a search process, we see it in four phases: an engage phase, a recruitment phase, a selection phase, and a transition phase. The engage phase is really the time that we work with the board directly and plan out the entire search. We want to plan the timelines, we want to plan all the activities, we want to plan the media communication, the information flow as to how the whole search process is going to work so that all board members are really familiar with that, have a chance to weigh in on what they want that process to look like, and everyone can get the critical dates on their calendar so that when the interviews come up or when critical tasks come up, everybody can be available to participate in those processes. It's also the time that we spend a great deal of time and energy getting to know your community. One of the things we pride ourselves on is the extensiveness of our community engagement process. We hold a series of public forums, of small group forums. We interview each one of the board members. We have online surveys that can help with the process. And so, we want to spend a couple of weeks getting to know what you as individual board members think is really important information and characteristics of the school district, and most importantly, the characteristics that are necessary in the next superintendent. And the reason we spend so much time upfront on that is that criteria that will emerge out of those activities and the subsequent leadership profile report, which will be prepared and shared with you as a board, really paint the picture of the kind of candidates that you're looking for in terms of what's the skill set that you want? What's the experiences that you want? What's the philosophy that's going to fit best for you as a board and for your school district and your community? And try to lay that out and define that as much as possible because that criteria becomes really important at two different phases later on in the search process. One, it becomes the criteria that we use as we both vet candidates who apply and recruit candidates who we think might be a good potential match for you based on that profile. And so, it becomes essential in that part of the recruitment effort. It also is the thing that we will use with you as you interview those candidates and use that criteria as your method to evaluate those candidates, to either create it as a rubric, if you want it, to use that information to help you craft the questions that you want to gather during the interview process. And so, it really becomes a very important set of information. And so, we spend a great deal of time upfront in the engagement process getting that set. And we also start to plan out advertising and getting word out about the position during that point of the search process. Once all of that is completed, we move into the recruitment phase in which you won't see as much of us during the engagement phase. We're here in the district quite a bit of time, both directly interacting with you in the planning activities, but also interacting with your community as we gather information. The recruitment effort is really a time that we spend time talking with candidates and encouraging people who may be internal candidates who apply or candidates that know of the position that want to apply for the position, but also reaching out to other educators to say, see who might be a really good fit to be your next superintendent. And our experience has been that approximately 60 to 70% of the candidates that boards eventually select as we go through this search process are people who never independently applied for the position. Somebody sought them out and said, "Might you be interested? Would you be willing to talk with the board about your potential candidacy?" Because often, you're not looking for somebody who's looking for a job. You're looking for somebody who's doing a great job in the position they're already in, and would they have a willingness to talk with you about what potential your school district might have for them? So, that effort usually takes about six to eight weeks, and we can adjust those timelines as necessary. And then, we move into the selection phase, which is the time that becomes a very intense period of time for you. The seven of you will get to know each other better than you think is possible. You'll spend a lot of time together.
Well, that's a deal breaker right there.
You'll spend time together interviewing candidates, but also discussing the pros and cons of various candidates, and we're with you throughout that entire process. We spent, we're onsite during the time that you're interviewing candidates. We don't necessarily sit in on the interviews with you, but we're here to facilitate the logistics of those activities. And most importantly, we're here to facilitate your debriefing of candidates after you interview them so that all seven of you can really actively participate in the process. I personally like to do the debriefing after each candidate, if we can set up the schedule to do that, because usually, your first interview with a candidate is two hours, hour and a half to two and a half hours, and you will gather a lot of information. You might interview two or three candidates in a given day, and if you wait till the end of the day to try to debrief that and remember everything that everybody said, it's often hard to keep tabs of all that information. So, if we can set up a schedule where you conduct the interview, and then I can help you facilitate the debriefing of that, we'll create a written record of what you learned about that candidate that you can refer back to if you choose to bring that candidate back for a second interview. And it'll help with your memory and your knowledge of the candidate, and it'll also help you keep track of what different candidates said on similar kinds of topics. And so, throughout that whole process, we're here to meet your needs. We'll help you to develop the script. We'll help with all of the logistics that are necessary. We'll figure out where you want to put the background checks into the process so you have background check information. Some people like to do it at the end. Some people like to do it on the semifinalists that they bring back. Some people like to do, some boards like to do it on all of the candidates that they choose to interview before they ever see them. They want a complete background check done. And then, we'll also help you narrow that field down, and we have a lot of techniques that we've used to help that process work smoothly and comfortably, techniques to help you gather information about when you collect salary information and salary expectations from candidates. You don't want to wait till the end of the process to do that because that puts the candidate in the driver's seat rather than the board and the candidate working through those issues together. And so, we'll share all of that information with you. And then, finally, the transition phase is to help with the logistics of, once you've selected the candidate, to help them get started with the planning of that activity, the announcements, the coordination with other candidates, sharing all of that information. So, all of the information that I shared with you is elaborated in our proposal in much greater detail, and there's lots of information there for you to review if you want to go back and look at it. But, I'm going to end there and leave at least a couple of minutes for questions and just reinforce the idea that we certainly are very interested in helping you with your superintendent search if you feel we're the right firm to do that, and Hank and I are the right individuals to help you with that, and that our main goal is to customize that search to have it work for you. So, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. And it's Jimmetro?
Uh-huh.
Great, okay, thank you, Mr. Jimmetro. Do we have trustee questions? Yes, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Dimitro?
Jimmetro.
Jimmetro.
I answered anything, don't worry.
Okay, all right.
GM throws everyone.
Okay. Well, thank you for being here. Question, has your firm, perhaps yourself or your colleague, had much experience with working with boards under the open meeting law?
Yes, we have.
Because it just in some of the conversations around sharing our thoughts and so on, all of that needs to be done in an open meeting. So, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that, and you've had some experience?
Yes, we have.
Thank you.
And I want to compliment you, reading in your materials, the diversity in the candidate pool, the appointments that you have successfully engineered, I appreciate that. I did not see you, the material said that you have a guarantee, but I didn't see what the time period is. Is it two years, the guarantee for a successful superintendent hire?
In terms of the person staying or in terms of getting?
Right, that if the person didn't stay, you would come back and do?
It's typically been one year.
One year, okay.
But, if you're interested in a two-year guarantee, we'd be certainly happy to talk about it.
I just wanted to make sure I understood what it was, okay? Other questions, trustees? Okay, and you would, you all would lead the stakeholder community input process, and I appreciated the leadership profile report to the board. I like that.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? If not, is there anything else you'd like to add that you haven't already shared with us?
I just wish you all the best. This is an important decision, and one of the things that boards often feel is picking the right firm and the right people to work with is a really critical issue for yourselves because you have to have confidence that those individuals can help you make the very best decisions that you need to make. So, it's kind of like hiring a temporary superintendent for a particular task.
Yeah.
So, I wish you all the best in that succession. And Emily has my cell phone number if there's any questions that come up that you think of later, you can certainly give me a call.
And Dr. Taylor has a question before she asked that, though. I want to thank you. You traveled from Schaumburg, Illinois, to get here?
Yes.
Well, thank you. That's, that was a big, big commitment, so we appreciate you being here. Dr. Taylor?
Certainly, that connects to my question, Madam President. Your materials mentioned doing a national search, but kind of a local connection on that, and I was wondering how you see that local connection because you're all out of Illinois.
We have to develop that. We do not have any current associates that are from Nevada. We have some, we have lots of associates in California.
Yeah, I know that you had some searches there as well.
And have done work in neighboring states. But, we probably want to look for if there's somebody that you would recommend that we reach out to for information of understanding Nevada a little bit more thoroughly as a state's state, in terms of the state of public education, we would be happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Demetrow.
All right. Our next presenter is with JG Consulting. Mr. James Guerra also presented a proposal for the first, the full search process. And this is Mr. James?
And here he is.
Hi, I'm Emily.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Hi, everybody.
So JJ has the login for Montage Talent?
Yeah, I'm just gonna.
Do prezi.
That's, that's okay. Not that it's hard. Sorry, folks, girl, if you want. That's okay. It's very simple.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra. Welcome.
Yeah, I appreciate you indulging me while I set that up. All right, we're all set.
Okay. Go ahead.
Awesome. So somebody going to, I guess, prompt me when we approach?
Just, yeah, the, the time is up on the board, so.
Okay. Terrific. Awesome. So my name is James Guerra. I'm the president, CEO of JG Consulting. We're a national consultancy. By way of consultancy, I mean that we're a diversified entity in terms of our educational support nationwide. We're based in the greater Austin, Texas area, but we have faculty members, retired superintendents who unfortunately, two of my colleagues could not be here today due to other commitments. They're actually co-presenting at the ALAS conference at the end of the week. And so I'm actually, wanted to honor my commitment to be here and to, to meet each and every one of you and to add some, some color to a little bit more about our processes and protocols. So on behalf of Dr. Leonatis, I apologize, she can't be here. She's one of the founding members of ALAS, so she's in Orlando this week. So in fact, I, I go straight from here to East Baton Rouge to interview with their board on Thursday. So it's a, it's a long week.
Oh, goodness.
But nonetheless, want to thank you for your service to this great school district. We appreciate the opportunity to, to answer any questions and to speak before you this afternoon. Thank you for the stakeholders and community members that are here listening. Your staff has been very hospitable this afternoon during my short two hours here so far. But anyway, again, my name is James Guerra. I'm the president, CEO. Founded the company five years ago this month, so very proud of the work that we've done in our short tenure. We've done more than 80 executive searches nationwide. I've spent some time working along the Pacific Northwest. Obviously, I probably have a little bit of a Texas accent, so you can tell that I'm from the South, but I've also lived and worked on the East Coast. During the tenure of my professional career, I've worked with the five largest school systems in some capacity in one way or another. Very fortunate to have such a deep bench of experienced practitioners, sitting superintendents, retired superintendents who serve in, within the context of our, of our executive search work. So I alluded to the fact that we have some representation this week at the ALAS conference, but we also have representation with the Council of Great City Schools, AAAS, all of their state affiliates, NAPSE, the National Alliance of Black School Educators, where I'll be serving as, as a, as a keynote address for their aspiring superintendence academy next month.
Great.
So you may see us in person. We just came back from CUBE, which is the Council of Urban Boards of Education, three weeks ago.
Trustee Albert was there.
Okay. We're, so Hasim Thar Ramos Jr. is our chief client officer on my faculty. So he works with us as a part of our business development efforts. So earlier I alluded to the full-service consultancy that we provide. So not only do we do and engage in executive search work, but we also offer leadership development opportunities for aspiring principals, sitting principals, central office cabinet level, and aspiring superintendents. So that's what, one thing that makes us a very unique asset to you and helps deepen the talent pool that we'll be able to attract to serve here in Washoe. We provide these leadership development opportunities to coach aspiring superintendents. So we just concluded our, our 2019 graduation cohort of about 15 members. And we did that with our, one of our West Coast coaches, in fact, who is the superintendent of schools in San Francisco Unified, Dr. Vincent Matthews. And then in, in the other coach who is based in Louisiana is Dr. Lamar Gory. He serves in Caddo Parish. And then on the East Coast, we have Dr. Lavelle Brown, who's in Ithaca City School District. So our cohort convenes every quarter starting in March. So 2020 will begin our second, our third cohort, cohort, excuse me, of aspiring superintendents. So the executive search work is a first third of what we do. Second third is the leadership development that I'm referring to. Last but not least, we serve as advisors and thought partners to a number of educational entities, whether they're educational technology companies, nonprofits, advisory groups, but we serve as a thought partner to help them be more robust in their offerings and how they can better serve school districts such as yours. So the full service breadth of what we do are those three things at a high level. I know we don't have much time to take a deeper dive into many of those different endeavors, but all to say, due to the nature of our work, it deepens the talent pool that we're able to attract to serve here in Washoe County. We have an extensive bench of current pipeline talent due to the leadership development. We have our pulse on the ascending track of talent across the country due to the various levels of organizational commitments that we have. I mentioned CUBE, mentioned ALAS, mentioned NAPSE. There's a handful of organizations that I'm sure you're very familiar with. So don't want to beat that drum too much, but it's important to note that many of the executive directors who serve in those organizations are a part of our faculty. So if you go to jgconsulting.us, there's a faculty page on our homepage. If you click on that, you can see all 40 of our faculty members in their bios. So it'll give you a sense of who we work with. And I'm very proud of the team that we've assembled over the course of the last five years. So here locally, you'll have a dedicated team of three, three of us. I'll serve as a lead consultant, the principal consultant, and then Dr. Leonatis will serve as our chief search officer. And then we also have two folks who are based in the state of Nevada. We have Terry Janison, who is in Clark County, former board president of Clark County School District. And then we also have Jody Huff, who works at the collegiate level now, but has since retired, I think, three years ago with Clark County School District. So you'll have local representation and then you'll have myself and Dr. Leonatis, who will travel back and forth, but be dedicated to you. The other thing that I'll leave you with before I show you a quick vignette to add on to some of the, the transparency of our work is that we will be a dedicated resource to you only in the state of Nevada. Meaning we will not engage in another search if another search were to open at the same time across the state. That's one of the commitments that we make to all of our partners in their respective states. You may notice that some of our counterparts and with the other groups, they have multiple searches going on simultaneously. We're afforded the opportunity not to have to do that because we're a full-service firm. So we'd like to dedicate ourselves to one search at a time in any particular state.
Okay. Great.
If you don't mind, so what she's going to play for us, one of the things that we do as a part of our process, which is very unique, is we provide you, your community members, your staff, any stakeholder is interested in this search with an opportunity to get to know the candidates prior to any in-person interview. We do this by utilizing a, a technology platform that is unique to us. Montage Talent is a mechanism for us to get to know the candidates before we bring them in on planes, trains, and automobiles. And it also gives you an opportunity to get to know the candidates before you choose to invite them. It's not enough just to have their artifacts, their letters of interest, their resumes, maybe a 90-day entry plan. Things can appear a certain way in black and white, but until you get to know the candidates before you choose to invite them in for an interview, this is an excellent way to, to screen the candidates that, that we're bringing forward. We will never withhold any information from you and the community during our process. You have access to everything that we have access to through our executive search work. So what you'll see here are four questions. We'll just play one in a moment. But the question that we pose to the candidates in this particular superintendent search is asking them to do the following. Please discuss your pertinent education experiences and accomplishments that you believe support your candidacy for the position of superintendent. So the candidates have an opportunity to read this, then they will respond using their own device. We are not on the other end of their, of, of this interview. So they're using their laptop, their tablet, anything that has an embedded camera. The unique feature about this platform is the candidates can rerecord their answers as many times as they want. So we know that if they're rushing through it, they probably didn't take it that seriously. It's a good, it's a good barometer for us to gauge the level of professionalism because we want to see that they're dressed appropriately, they're treating it like a standard interview, but also make a great impression for each of you. Because when we present these, these findings to you, you're not only going to have this, but you're going to have a tangible portfolio in front of you with the letters of interest, the resumes, references, academic credentials, background reports, and checks that we do, all of the above is going to be there for you to see. We'll categorically identify the top 10 as group A, as, as group A, and then group B will be the delta of, of the balance of candidates. So we're not going to withhold and only bring top 10. Let's just say hypothetically, you have 60 apply. You'll have the top 10 and then you'll have the balance of 50 to reference. So if you're not pleased for whatever reason with any of our top 10, you could say, hey, James, hey, Dr. Leonatis, who else is in this pool that we could, we could take a closer look at, including their on-demand interviews? So if you wouldn't mind, we'll play this really quick and then entertain any questions.
Well, first of all, let me just say thank you for allowing me to have an opportunity to share my heart and why I think I'd be the best potential future superintendent for Lovejoy ISD. If you were partnering with me, you'd be partnering with a person of a deep passion for growing, developing students, teachers, staff, and the community, as well as working with the school board members, provide every opportunity for those of you influenced to succeed. I definitely love kids. I love teachers. I love staff. I love education. And I have a deep knowledge of Lovejoy ISD in particular, serving as the former principal of Lovejoy High School and really the first principal of Lovejoy High School, graduating at first class. And as a former Lovejoy parent, my son attended there for several years as well. Just recently, even now, in the last couple of years as a superintendent, we've taken our.
So I just wanted to end it, but I think you get the idea. So this is just a preliminary interview, interviewing tool to give you an idea of who the candidates are. Again, it's not to replace the in-person interview. It's to strengthen our understanding of who the candidates are. We'll do our job of recruiting and identifying talent according to the job description and the job profile that we develop as a team and then also as the, as the community and the online surveys that we'll conduct to, to garner value and to understand what, what the students are looking for, what your internal staff is looking for, what you're looking for, and who the next leader of this school district will be. And so once that's done and that's prepared, candidates will have an opportunity to apply. If they meet the minimum qualifications, they'll be asked to complete this on-demand interview is what it's referred to as. And again, it's only during the duration of the application period. So if they wait till the 11th hour to apply, unfortunately, they only have until the 12th hour to complete the on-demand interview. So while we're recruiting candidates, we're very deliberate and intentional with our instructions not to wait too long, so that way they have ample time and they're not rushed through this. But candidates are now taking a close look at this opportunity. I gave you credit and thanks on LinkedIn and some of our social media for giving us the opportunity to be here today. And if you were to look at my personal and professional profile and our company's profile, you could see the number of likes and the number of views since, since we were invited by the district to be here, which is a testament to the hard work that, that you have done, your service to the district, what the staff has done, and the stellar reputation. So it's a district of choice and let's continue on that trend and keep, keep moving upward. And we love to partner with you in that effort and to serve in that capacity alongside your, your leadership. If there are any questions, I'd love to answer.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Guerra. Questions? I know one, oh, do you want, well, one, I believe that Texas is a closed process. It's not an open meeting law process for hiring. Does that present any problems? Because we are open meeting.
No, doesn't present any problems. As I mentioned, we're interviewing on Thursday in East Baton Rouge. There are also open meetings. Done searches in other states where they adhere and advise to the sunshine laws. And so we're, we're very accustomed to, to working within the context of the open meeting requirements.
Okay. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I want to commend you. I've never seen that, that on-demand. I think that's fantastic.
Thank you.
To thank you for that, for your forward thinking. You mentioned, and I hope I didn't miss it in the materials, we have a lot, but you mentioned you, you've had extension, extensive experience in the state of Nevada? Did I miss that listed somewhere? I didn't?
No, it's right. You, yeah, it says you, I believe, yeah, you said works nationwide with extensive experience in Nevada, and I believe that's because of the associates that you named. Is that?
That's correct.
Right. And I, thank you for that. I want to, can you, I don't, can you talk a little, just a little bit more without divulging anything you shouldn't, and mention for your associates?
Sure.
But I'd like to hear a little bit more about that.
Right. So years, years ago, I had the good fortune of, of working in the Clark County School District and also I spent some time working with several grant initiatives, federal initiatives across the state. And specifically with the reading intervention grants that were allotted by the, by the federal government.
Okay.
And so I, I spent considerable amount of time getting to understand and getting to know the State Board of Education. That's how I, I became connected at that time to Terry Janison, who's a former board president in Clark County. And I believe at that time, it was Dwight Jones who was the superintendent. Terry Janison was serving as a senior advisor to Governor Sandoval at the State Board of Education. And so I was intimately involved. I spent a year working across the state and supporting those specific initiatives. And since then, just grown and have deep admiration for Terry and her work and, and Jody, of course, through our work in the district. And that's, that's what, that's what inspired me to recruit them to join the team.
Great. Okay. Other questions? Well, I too want to thank you for making the journey to be here.
Yeah, no problem.
And we very much appreciate your interest and thank you for preparing some great materials for us to review. Is there anything else you want to add before you go?
No, I think I have said everything that, that I wanted to say in, in this time. And again, thank you for your service to the district. And if I can answer any questions later, if there is an opportunity, Emily knows how to reach me and you have my contact information. But again, on behalf of JG Consulting and my colleagues who couldn't be here, thank you for the opportunity and thanks for your service to the district and community.
Great. And, and thank you for the work you're doing to develop the next generation of leaders. That's very forward-thinking, very visionary. So thank you for that work.
Appreciate it.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Guerra.
All right.
All right. Our next presenter is with McPherson Jacobson LLC. And joining us today is Dr. Barry Carroll.
What's the last name, Emily?
Carroll.
Carroll, okay.
Barry Carroll.
Mr. Carroll, welcome.
Thank you.
Give you a second to get settled there.
Hi.
Welcome. Thank you for making the trip to be here with us.
Thank you.
And you are, are you out of Omaha?
I am not. I, I work for the firm, McPherson and Jacobson, out of Omaha, but I actually live just outside of Huntsville, Alabama.
You're in Alabama.
Yes.
Okay. My, my aunt was in Tuscaloosa, worked for the university.
Roll tide.
Roll tide. That's right.
I like you all already.
Can't say. Please go ahead.
Okay. Thank you very much. My name is Barry Carroll and I am a consultant for McPherson and Jacobson. I do want to thank you for this opportunity to come and present to you on behalf of McPherson and Jacobson.
Roll Tide.
Roll Tide. That's right.
I like you all already.
Please go ahead.
Okay. Thank you very much. My name is Barry Carroll, and I am a consultant for McPherson and Jacobson. I do want to thank you for this opportunity to come and present to you on behalf of McPherson and Jacobson. They asked me if I could come out. It's a great opportunity to present how we go about our process, our protocol for searching, helping boards search for superintendents. I do want to say, please excuse me for my southern accent, but I am from Alabama, so if I say, "Hey, y'all," or something, hopefully you'll excuse that.
My mother was born in Clarksville, Mississippi, so it's very welcome for me.
Okay. Great. Thank you. My background is I'm a former superintendent in Alabama. I served there for 10 years as a superintendent. I started as a classroom teacher, as a high school assistant principal, middle school principal for two schools, moved to the central office where I was director of secondary ed, not all in the same district, these were different districts, and then assistant superintendent, and then superintendent for 10 years. After retiring in 2011, I went to work for a company in Atlanta. I noticed the Promethean board downstairs, and I worked for Promethean for about three years, and then worked for another technology company there in Atlanta, and then decided to go out on my own and do some consulting, and that's how I came about working with McPherson and Jacobson. I graduated from Alabama A&amp;M University in Huntsville. That's a HBCU university, and played football there for four years, lettered for four years, lived on campus for four years. My AKA was Barry White, so...
Well-played, Mr. Carroll.
One of the greatest experiences of my life. I do hold two master's degrees and a doctorate from the University of Alabama in Tuscaloosa. So I went there as well. My wife and I lived there for 14 years. I am proud to be a consultant for McPherson and Jacobson. We are a nationally known search firm, one of the top search firms in the U.S. We really believe, and I believe this as a superintendent, I know you as board members believe this as well, that students are entitled to a high-quality education, and that starts with leadership from the top. The top meaning the board and the superintendent. So you have a... You really have a tremendous task in front of you, and I know you already recognize that, that naming a new superintendent is one of the most important things you'll do as a board member. I know you know that already, but it is vital. Our mission at McPherson and Jacobson is to ensure that your search gets quality leadership candidates so you can continue excellent education here in Washoe County. McPherson and Jacobson's been doing national searches since 1991. Tom Jacobson is our CEO, and he's still active. He couldn't be here today, so he asked me to fill in for him. We've placed over 750 superintendents and other education and other officials throughout the years. We have a five-phase process that we use, a protocol, if you will, that allows you, the board, to be in control of the process. I'm working with the board now, that we're flexible, and you make those determinations. We tell you what our protocol, what we like to do, and how we like to do that. But if you say, "Hey, we don't particularly want to do one of those areas," then we work with you on that and try to do it the way that you would like for us to do that. We do most of the legwork, honestly. We do the recruiting, and we take the applications, and we contact people across sitting superintendents, successful superintendents, upcoming superintendents, those who might be interested in your position. There's a study that says, a review, Marzano's study, actually, it's in the proposal we provided, says a review of 3.4 million student achievement scores found that the superintendent's tenure is probably the most positively correlated with student achievement. So the longer the superintendent stays, the longer you can keep them in place, the longer you build that culture within your district, usually the higher the test scores for students. So we believe that's really important. So organizations using McPherson and Jacobson, that protocol, it's really been sustainable in that leadership over time. So over the last five years, almost 80% of the administrators that we've helped place with boards are still where they were hired, and that's quite a high percentage in today's society and today's educational culture. We also work closely with universities and professional organizations, AAS, A and the National School Board Association and others, and promoting and recruiting minority candidates and female applicants. We try to do that as well. For the past five years, approximately 1/3 of our applicants have been females, and almost 1/4 of our applicants have been ethnically diverse. The McPherson and Jacobson process is comprehensive, provides critical support to the board for the most time-consuming part, and that's the recruiting and screening of the candidates, and we do that. And I'll get into that a little bit more in just a minute. So that you, as the board, can focus on, and we'll keep you posted along the way, once the process starts, we'll keep you informed, we'll communicate with you on a regular basis, but we leave the interviewing and the actual selection to the board. The board makes that decision, so... And I'll talk about how we do that in just a minute. So we work with the board to identify, first of all, top criteria. What are you looking for in a superintendent? We start with that. We want to know from you, and we want to know from the stakeholders in your community, what are you looking for in a superintendent? And so, we're really big on a couple of things, transparency, we're really big on stakeholder input, because we think that provides you with a glimpse of what, instead of talking to one group or another group, we have stakeholder groups, and it's up to you, if you choose our firm to do this, who those stakeholders groups are. But we usually recommend student groups, teacher groups, administrator, school administrator groups, central office groups, maybe business leaders and community leaders, those in government who want to be involved, so that they can give input on what you're looking for. And there's all other types of leaders, such as the religious leaders and pastors in your area who might want to give input as well. We actively recruit candidates that meet your selection criteria. Once we met with stakeholders, we hear from you what you're looking for, you know what the stakeholders want, then we put that together, and as we're screening candidates, we're looking to match the candidates that meet your criteria. I was, as a superintendent, was involved in several national superintendent organizations, and many of our consultants, we have over 125 consultants that work for McPherson and Jacobson across the nation. And so, they're well-connected. I'm well-connected. Having been in education for over 30 years, and having been a part of AASA and a part of a number of national superintendent organizations, I know a lot of superintendents across the nation. NABSE is another organization that I've been involved with, AASA, ERDI, I can, the list goes on and on for those. But we, I know a lot of superintendents have a large Rolodex, have a large network of individuals that we can reach out to, and we do that. I call individuals and say, and we do, we network with each other, and we call and say, "This job is open, want to make you aware, this is what they're looking for." And if they feel comfortable, feel like they meet the qualifications and the criteria that you set for, then we encourage them to apply. If we're selected, I mentioned the five phases of our superintendent search, and that is, let me just run through those just quickly, just so you know. Phase one, we work with you, the board, and we identify those characteristics of a future superintendent that you're looking for. We establish those timelines, and all of this is in your proposal that we gave you, but we establish those timelines. I think it's really important. That's not as easy as it sounds to lock all of that down, and those target dates for the selection process for you. We work with you on that. I think it's on page 35 of the proposal, if you would like to look at that. We determine appropriate, through you, appropriate advertising venues, whether it's Ed Week or AASA, or any of the advertising venues that you might want for us to advertise. We do that nationally, and people know about your position when we advertise those. We ask the board to determine some compensation parameters, not to lock it down totally, but some, so we can give an idea of when we print brochures and those kinds of things, that we can give people an idea of what you're looking at. And then we ask you, as a board, to identify a point of contact. If I'm working on this search, which I think I will be, if selected, it would be me, and maybe two or three other consultants would determine that at a later date and who they would be, but we need a point of contact, whoever that would be. We're happy to communicate with the whole board, but we're happy also to communicate and run information through a point of contact, so we make sure we all stay on the same page. Phase two, working with the board, the board's point of contact and the board. We schedule stakeholder meetings for input, we meet the stakeholders' groups, we ask four questions of them, of each stakeholder group, and get input for them. We record all of that, and then we provide you a document that says everything that they said, and we don't take things out, and we don't sugarcoat it. If they say something very positive, we put it in there. If they happen to say something negative about the school district, we're going to put it in there, so you can read it and have an idea of what your community stakeholders feel. We recruit and then track the applicants, keep all the applicants informed of their status during the selection process, and make them aware of what's going on and what the procedures and process protocol will be. Phase three, we evaluate each applicant against the selection criteria again. We do reference checks. You know, when people apply for jobs, they're going to put people on the references that they know are going to say positive things about them, right? So what we do is we talk to those individuals, but we ask them a question, who else that you know knows this person we might speak with? And we go about three layers deep in that. So we're not just asking the people who they listed as their reference, but we ask others in that community as well. And, you know, and I know, and I'm sure other consultants in McPherson and Jacobson know people in this area that we could call and say, you know, "Tell us what you think about this person," or not just in this area, but for the applicants as well. We have the applicants submit a video, which I think is really important, which we share with the board. So we basically take the large pool of applicants, we, as a consulting team, will narrow that list down to a number, whatever that number might be, and then we ask those applicants who were selected in that number to submit a video. We watch that, then we try to pare that down again. We bring to you, it's generally six to eight, I would call them semifinalists, that you could take a look at their videos and say, "Hey, we like this." And that helps us narrow it down again, and you make that determination, is who are your finalists, whether that's one, two, three, or four. I wouldn't recommend any more than four. Generally, it's three, but that's certainly up to you. We assist you, if you want our assistance in developing a set of interview questions that will be asked at the interview, so we work on that with you as well, and provide questions that fit the categories maybe that you're interested in hearing or asking questions about, and then we can tweak those questions. They're your questions, will we help you with that if you so desire. Phase four, select the applicants to be interviewed. We assist the board in determining the interview procedures, contact, we contact all the finalists and schedule their interview, and we, then we're down to the selection of the superintendent, which is, again, the board's responsibility, not our responsibility. So phase five, if we work with the board to establish superintendent performance objectives, you know, what do you expect, how are they going to perform over time? And then, if selected, again, we'll provide an experienced, dedicated group of individuals, and I've worked with a number of those. I've done the Jackson, Mississippi, search, I've done the LaGrange, Georgia, search, Fulton County, Georgia. Right now, I'm involved in Norfolk, Virginia, and we have very talented consultants who work on those. One, for example, Steve Joel, who is still the superintendent in Lincoln, Nebraska, but well-known nationally, and he's a consultant with McPherson and Jacobson. He and I have had a number of conversations. I think if we're selected, Steve and I will be probably the two leads on this search, and we'll be working very closely with you.
Can I just clarify that, Mr. Carroll? So he's a current sitting superintendent?
He is.
So he's, but he's available to do this and be here for the meetings that we would need him for?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, because I saw that in his resume. Okay.
He and I have been good friends for a long time, so he and I have already talked about that. Just, I guess, closing remarks, so to speak, for me, is McPherson and Jacobson, just to summarize, we don't represent any candidates, we're not headhunters, so to speak, but we do keep a database of quality candidates, and we do recruit candidates. I guess, in one sense, you could say we are headhunters, but we invite them to apply, we invite them to take a look at what you've set forth as your criteria and what characteristics you're looking for in a superintendent, to make sure they meet those. And then, we encourage them to apply if they think they fit what you're looking for. Our searches draw applicants, I've already said, from all over the United States. We pursue current superintendents. We're careful about that, because some superintendents aren't comfortable with applying for other jobs if their name's going to be released, so we're careful about that. But we try to be as transparent with that as we possibly can on both sides. We do embrace diversity in our candidates. We have a diverse group of consultants with extensive background in education and public service. We do believe in transparency and community input, and if the board chooses to use us, you know, and our complete services, and it's in, all of this is in your proposal, we will guarantee this process for two years. If the person who is chosen leaves for whatever reason, within that period of time, we'll repeat that process at no charge except for expenses. We're really confident in our abilities, we're confident in what we do, you know, we're good at it. We find really good candidates, and we find, and we've helped boards place superintendents that they're very, have been very happy with. So, again, I'm honored, we're honored as McPherson and Jacobson to be here, and I'm convinced that our process of doing, going through this, is one of the best. I'm sure there are others, there's probably five other groups who'll say theirs is the best, but we think ours is the best. We think we're really good at it, and I think we can provide you with a list of quality candidates to provide leadership, and candidates are applicants and candidates for you to consider for your superintendent's position. So I'll stop there. Is that appropriate to stop?
That's perfect. Perfect. Okay.
Probably talked too long.
No, that was perfect. Any questions, trustees? I see in one of the references we talked to that you had experience working with unions as part of the stakeholder input process, and we certainly have active union representation here.
Yes, that's perfectly fine.
Good.
We encourage that as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you for traveling from Alabama to be here. We appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And very thorough, and we'll, I'm certainly, we'll be in touch as soon as we can. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thanks, Mr. Carroll.
All right. Our last presenter today is Ray and Associates, and Mr. Ryan Ray and Dr. James Hager are joining us for the presentation.
Dr. James Hager, whose photo is on the wall.
We would go around and shake hands, but it looks like it's a little difficult to do that.
It's a new system now.
A virtual handshake, if you will.
Welcome, welcome back.
Thank you.
Please go ahead.
Well, thank you for having us. My name is Ryan Ray. I'm the president of the search firm, Ray and Associates. We've been in business for 45 years, and we are excited for the opportunity to come back to the state of Nevada and do some work with you all. So thank you for having us. I don't really need to make an introduction, but he can introduce himself.
Yes, I'm Jim Hager, and I'm also very delighted to be here and be a part of this process that you're going through. Do you know it's the most important job that you, as board members, have before you? A little bit about me, some of you know me really well, some probably not at all, but I've been a superintendent for well over 20 years, my career, probably 12 years as a professor of educational leadership. In about the third phase of failing retirement, I've been working in search consulting work, mentoring, and coaching. And so, when this opportunity came up, I said, you know, that's one of my prides, is Washoe County School District, so we're delighted to be here.
Great, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Ryan, for being here as well.
Yes, absolutely. You know, as the president of the firm, I can kind of pick and choose which searches I work. And, you know, I really want to work here, and that's why I'm here today, so. We understand that you have had five other presentations so far today, so you've had a lot of information thrown at you. And so, what we wanted to do is get some information to you about not all executive search firms are the same, and that there's a clear difference with us. So we wanted to hit some bullet points and speak briefly and quickly about those, and then get to your questions, because we know you have questions and we want to answer them. So the first...
By the way, those are on page 20, if you've got the proposal in front of you. Page 20 is what we're going to be addressing a little bit.
So the first thing that we want you to know is, we customize every search to meet the specific needs of the clients. So this is not our search. This is your... This is your search. So we want to be clear and upfront with that. We'll work with you as a partner, but this is your search, and this is the most important job you have as a school board, and so we take it very seriously. We have the largest professional recruiting network in the country. We have over 160 associates across the country that we can help, that we use, that can help us in the recruitment phase and in the recruitment process. It's great because if somebody from Illinois applies, I can go ahead and call Mary Fassbender and say, I've already Googled this person. What do I really need to know about this individual that I'm not going to read in the newspapers?
Let me add on real quick. We also have a very diverse, both by gender, by ethnicity, obviously by age. So we have a good representation, which is, we take great pride in that diversity because that also helps us reach out to candidates that may not be thinking they would be a viable candidate, and we can convince them otherwise, and it's really a positive for us.
Yes, in fact, we place more women and minorities than any other search firm in the country, and we know that because we track it. And actually, 40% of our candidates, sorry, our associates are women or minorities. So we're very proud of that fact. We have a highly qualified, full-time staff that's always accessible to respond. So you'll always, if you call the office, you'll get somebody, a live person, you'll never have an answer machine. We aggressively recruit candidates who closely match the district profile. So we use that term aggressively recruit, because you want a superintendent that has a good job now. You don't want a superintendent that's reading the want ads. So it's our job to go out based on your profile and recruit people aggressively. We provide an attractive, user-friendly and informative website that allows candidates to access application materials online. We also receive more applications than any other search firm in the country. Our average applications per search is around 70. And last year, we actually had a search in Texas that had over 130 applicants. And we pride ourselves with that by going and getting the word out about the searches that we have. We affiliate ourselves with AASA, NSBA, ALIS, the Latino Administrators, as well as NAPSCY, the National Alliance of Black School Educators. So we're at all of those conferences, including state conferences across the country, networking and getting you good candidates. We actually also interview each individual board member in order to, for them to provide information and insight to the development of that profile characteristics for the position. So we'll meet individually with you and find out exactly what you want as a board member in the next superintendent. And we collect and organize communities and staff input when desired by the board and provide a report that's highly useful in establishing the position criteria. So what we'll do is we'll go and have constituent meetings all across the county and meet with whoever you want us to meet with and listen to whoever you want us to meet with. Some days, that gets done in one day, sometimes it's two days, we've even stayed three days on the ground. And since Jim and I are both here, we can have meetings going at the same time. And by the way, just so you know, Jim and I are not here to sell you a search. Jim and I are going to be the ones that are actually working it. So you will see our faces probably more than you'll want to. Go ahead, Jim.
Well, and also on that, which is unique, we do an online survey that is posted on your website, our website, any of the websites that you have. And it's going out, we believe very strongly in student voice, so we want to make sure we hear from schools, students particularly at the senior high school, possibly the junior high. And we put that in whatever languages you would like, let's have naturally. It's automatically in English and Spanish, but if you've got other groups within your community, we will have it put into that language. And that will develop a profile of what people prefer in the qualities of a superintendent. So besides face-to-face interaction, we do that particular interaction. So lucky in our time up there, I'll quickly go through the others so we can get to your questions. We also do a lot of publications where we put a profile together at your direction. We have the skill set and the people in our headquarters that put together various kinds of profiling for you. So we will either do that in harmony with the school district, or we'll do it individually and give it to you for your, we don't do anything without your approval, okay? And so it becomes one of those things. But profiling is one of those things that we think is very important, because we'll immediately ship those out to the 160 people that we have, broadcast them all over, and people will be able to see them. We have one of the most complete, comprehensive investigation systems you can want on an HR process. We do it in two phases. We do what we call the soft kind of investigation. That's when somebody just applies or they're interested. We'll do the soft, so we'll look at all social media, we'll get newspaper articles. So we've got all of those just to see if there's anything there. And we will also ask the candidate, is there anything in your background that will embarrass you, embarrass us, or embarrass the school district? Then you better say that right up front. And we have had some that excluded them immediately, others, we told them to the board, and we said, that's okay with us, and they processed it. So that's the first one. The second one is, when you get it down to the finals, then we have a company that we work with that will do criminal, civil, sexual abuse, sexual harassment, DUI, so they're working local, state, national highway patrol. And we get a written report that I, if I'm doing that part of it, I would share with Chairman Holland, and she would be able to have access. That's one thing we kind of keep really confidential if there's things in there or not, so.
One thing that we really want you to know is, we don't want any surprises, you don't want any surprises. So by the time we bring you these candidates, we guarantee they will be who they say they are.
The other thing that we do that's unique, that others that I know of don't do, is once we've identified maybe the top 10 to 11 to 12, we do a video interview with them. So you will see that video interview. It's a five-minute interview, three questions, and they're timed, and they don't know what the questions are. So a lot of people can write well and do a lot of different things, but under a pressure of an interview like that. So you'll see that as you're discussing these candidates that we would present to you. So it kind of gives you another avenue that you go on. We also have a really, Ryan talked a little bit about this, we have an exciting way that we have a matrix for board members to complete on each of the semifinalists and the finalists. It's amazing how that will show how close or how far apart you are, and we use that as a discussion point as we go through. Been using that for probably 35 of the 43 years of the company as we go through them. We, Ryan's already talked about the highly diverse pool of candidates we have. We provide in-depth candidate video, which I just spoke about. I would also say to you that we do do questions. If you want to do them yourself, that's fine, but we will give you, if you like, we will give you semifinalist questions. We don't put the look fours on them, those are yours to decide, and you can use part or all or none of those questions and do that for finals and semifinalists. We do provide a two-year guarantee clause in the contract. If for whatever reason the individual selected does not complete the two-year, we'll come in at cost to do that for search again. Last one that might be quite important is that we don't recruit a person that's a superintendent for five years after placement of them.
And if you want us to go ahead and in the contract write, we will never recruit them, then we will do that as well. And one other thing that is really important, we have a portal. So board members can go at any time and access the portal and find valuable information regarding the search timeline, et cetera, et cetera. So we have that available. So those are our quick points of the clear difference between Ray &amp; Associates, and it's really what sets us apart. So thank you for allowing us to quickly present to you, and we look forward to your questions.
Great, okay, thank you. Trustees, questions? Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. Good to see you, Dr. Hager. Thanks to both of you for being here, and especially as a president, we really appreciate that. I was looking through your list of associates in it, and I don't see anyone in Nevada. Have you ever had an associate in Nevada?
We have had an associate in Nevada, however, that associate has moved, so is no longer in Nevada.
Okay.
I consider myself in Nevada.
Are you still teaching at UNLV, Dr. Hager?
No, I'm not. Actually, I'm teaching at the University of Washington.
Okay.
So, yeah, they're just restarting that program.
We have done searches in Nevada, so we know the state, and obviously, there's nobody that knows your system and your district better than the gentleman that's sitting next to me, so we feel like we know you.
And we also know Nevada. I do a lot of work with the Nevada Associations for aspiring leaders, so I'm here at least a week to two weeks out of a month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Raymond?
Thank you both for being here. I believe I read, did you do the search in Clark County recently, Ray &amp; Associates?
We did do that search.
And were either of you involved in that search?
We were not. I was busy, as I was saying, I could pick and choose which searches, but I was not a part of that. Gary Ray, who founded our firm, was the lead on that.
Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
No, I was not.
No.
Other questions? Okay, is there anything else you want to add that you haven't shared with us yet?
Other than, we believe that, given what we have done on the history of the searches that we've done, we have worked with schools very close in nature to you, to your diversity, to your demographics, to the expectations you have. I noticed that on the website, it showed that you were taking great pride in being identified by the niche school system to say that you have a high rank in the state of Nevada. I have worked with that very closely with other school districts in that ranking, and we literally reach out to some of those superintendents in those school districts to say, hey, we've got another school that's in this niche network, and this is where they rank, and they want somebody comparable to that.
And we really look forward to hitting the ground running with this. If we were lucky enough to be selected, I am going to be at the Council of Great City Schools next week, and so I would love to be handing out a flyer promoting your district and the opportunity. So we're very excited.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, well, thank you both for making the trip to be here, and great to learn more about you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, well, I'm sure Robert Sidford's watching and excited that I've probably taken the award for going overtime for an item, right? Just joking, Robert, if you're watching. I don't really know what the protocols are right now that we're over and we're running into the board meeting, so.
I think we should continue. And, absolutely, yeah, yeah, we don't have to start at 4:00, although we recognize that everyone is here for the rest of the meeting, but this is a public matter, and it's a very important matter to the board, our selection of a search firm to help us find our next superintendent. So is that okay with you all, that we go ahead while it's very fresh in our minds and have this conversation? We have some public comment, let's hear from the public comment. Stacy Cooper? Hello, Stacy, welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Stacy Cooper, and I am an educator here in Washoe County School District, not advocating for Washoe County, but actually coming up here personally. Wasn't planning on coming up to talk, so I don't have a script, but excited to see that there is an active search process that is reaching out and connecting with some professional firms on a very important search. I was compelled, after standing out there and seeing the list of the agencies that were ready and positioned to come in, to come up here and give you my gut instinct. It's not confidential. You know, as a professional administrator, many of us maintain active profiles with search firms nationwide. I was brought here from a national search firm back in 2010, so with that, I'm a member of five, three of the search firms that you are screening today. I can tell you, though, that there is one firm that I work with more individually than any of the others, and that's Ray Associates. They are personalized, and when they say they get to know you, they really get to know you. And there is nothing behind a curtain when you're going into those interview capacities. They are honest when they say that they respond with a phone call. They do give you their personalized cell numbers. They do call you back sometimes at 11:00 at night if they know it's urgent and on your brain and you're not sleeping. So I just want to say to you, I'm happy with all of the firms that I'm affiliated to, but when I saw the list, I could not help but come up and tell you how impressed I am with the personalized service of Ray.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
Katie Holland Simon, Simon, no.
It's okay.
I get it wrong all the time. And trustees, thank you so much for your time to meet these great candidates that you have to choose from. My name is Dr. Mary Alber, and when I founded the Education Innovation Collaborative last year, the mission was really to be a support to the very process that you're undergoing right now, your most important role, which is to help find leadership for this district. And in the process of your choosing which firm, I would like to make a strong recommendation based on my personal knowledge and experience with Dr. Bill Bryan. I feel like you would be in the best hands possible for a number of reasons. And I wrote you a letter yesterday with two pages of reasons why. But what I want to summarize and what I heard about the other candidates today and looking at their proposals, is where you're going to get the biggest bang for the buck with Dr. Bryan's group, is that their entire focus is building the stakeholder involvement in the process, the community, deep engagement, not just with the staff, parents, the interior people to the organization and yourselves, but also the broader community of employers, of community members like me who no longer have students in the school system. But I have a strong vested interest in making sure that this district is top-notch in the country, in the world, ideally. That's my goal. So when we think about what the Bryan group can bring to the table, I've had the honor of working with him over the last few weeks. He's been helping with Education Innovation Collaborative to launch something called the Future of Learning Lab Initiative. And in this process, we want to build community engagement in the visioning and strategic planning process. So of course, a leader should be hired. You guys need to find the leader that's going to be the best for Washoe County. Well, part of that is what is the strategic plan? Where do we want to be? What are our goals? And I would suggest that the Bryan group is capable of having incredibly deep conversations with our community to help learn, inform, and give feedback to you, the selection committee, but through hopefully a separate selection committee as well, that will be enabling this district to choose from the world-class leadership through the proficiency system that the Bryan group uniquely offers. So I hope that I can be of service to you in this process going forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Alber, and thank you for taking the time to be here throughout this process. It's really important, so we appreciate it.
That's all I have.
Thank you, JJ. So trustees, where would you like to start? Do you have any questions, first of all, that Emily can relay to any of the presenters that have not yet been answered that came to you later? Does anyone have any questions before we get into that? Okay, oh, yes, Vice President Raymond?
I'm not so sure that I need this to go out to them and to come back with an answer, but I just wondered if in your conversations, there was one of the proposals that did sort of itemize the expenses for the search process? of itemize the expenses for the search process by kind of category, and the others kind of just did a more of a lump sum. But do you know if they're open to, you know, if we, for instance, have this one proposal just to do a stakeholder input, or we saw down the line that we wanted to do something more in-house and take that kind of off of the proposal? Would that impact their pricing? Do you know, or would they be open to that?
So, what I, the message that I seem to get from all of the proposers was that there is a lot of flexibility and customization. So, while I can't say definitively that each would be open to kind of, you know, parsing out different segments, we were clear about our desire to be able to do that in the information that we sent out prior to the proposals, and then also, I think, that aligned to the message that they've been sending for customization. I would be surprised if they didn't.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, I think where I'd offer a suggestion for us to start is maybe for trustees to tell us, who were your top three? And maybe we can begin to narrow down from that part. So, maybe I'll give you a moment. Nathan, looked like you were ready to comment on your top three. If not, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Yeah? Well, I really did like the Bryan Group. I thought it was a very good thing that Dr. Bryan had a grandson in the district, because to me, that indicates that he has a personal stake in finding the best and most qualified candidate for the position. His credentials and process were both incredibly detailed and impressive, which I greatly respected. Hazard Young had a very detailed process as well, which I liked. I appreciated their specificity and also their devotion to equity. My concern with them is the fact they're based in Illinois. And I thought Ray and Associates was also very good. I appreciated that they took the time to mention community outreach, as well as that they employ people with a lot of experience in the area. And I think that that is definitely important when selecting someone to run the superintendency of an area. They have an intimate knowledge of the place, so.
Okay, so those would be your top three for this round, Bryan and Hazard Young and Ray, okay? Who else has a? Dr. Taylor?
Certainly, thank you, Madam President. I have a, my top three would be HYA for the same reason that.
That's Hazard Young.
Yes, that's Hazard Young. Yes, that's Hazard Young, HYA, for the same reason. I like their emphasis on diversity, their experience, and that they spoke specifically to various languages, just knowing that was a part of it, and I think that we, you know, we want to be as inclusive as we can, and knowing that we have a majority-minority district, I think it's important that we include as many of those stakeholders, students, their parents, and so on, as possible. Also, Ray and Associates, I think their experience, they're very comprehensive, and obviously, we can't underestimate the impact that they have. They have some experience within the state and as well as, you know, the experience of Dr. Hager. That can be good and bad, depending on your perspective, but I think knowing some inside, you know, can certainly be value-added. And my third, this is in no particular order, by the way, is actually McPherson and Jacobson for that same reason. Their experience, they were very comprehensive. They've had successful searches in the area of superintendency. I liked the Byron Group. I liked that they were close, you know, they're in incline, but I'm just uncomfortable with their lack of experience in superintendency, and they're being such a new firm, and I know everyone has to get going. I just don't want to get going with us.
Okay, okay. Others. Vice President Raymond.
I would say, in no particular order, for me, the three that stood out were Ray and Associates. I think I would just echo what Dr. Taylor said, the obvious connection to the community, I think, good and bad, but, you know, I just think they have a lot of experience, and I appreciated their calling out their emphasis on diversity and their hiring and their multiple languages for their survey process. I also liked McPherson, and I actually, I was impressed with JG Consulting and had them in the top for my, I think, they, to me, seemed a kind of mix of having that established kind of work in the, in large districts across the country, but also felt almost, in a way, to be a little bit more tailored towards providing, I guess, a more targeted product for our district, and the connections they have in the state were, I thought, impressive too, so.
Good, okay. Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. And again, in no particular order, I liked Hazard Young, Atiya Associates. I like the fact that they've done a lot of superintendent searches, both for small school districts, all the way up to one of the biggest school districts, I think, in the country. I like JG Consulting, the fact that they have had some experience in Nevada, and I thought that their presentation was pretty well-structured. And then I liked Ray and Associates as well, because they've, when you're doing a superintendent search, especially nationwide, you want to have, you know, good systems in place and a lot of experience, because it can be complicated and complex sometimes, and they seem to have that. And I like the fact that all three of those came in person. I certainly don't, would never fault anybody that could make it, because things happen, but I like to see that those three were able to be here in person and see us and hear our voices, and we can hear theirs, so that meant a lot to me, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Trustee Minetto?
Yeah, and I do have an order. My number-one favorite was JG Consulting, and I think the fact that it was, we'd be the only people they'd be doing this for, went like, "Oh, yeah," so that they're not divided amongst the rest of the country trying to get superintendents for several people.
The state, that we're the only ones they would be working with in the state of Nevada.
Well, that's good, too.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, and I don't know if these two are in this order, but Hazard Young, liked that, and I did like Bryan Group because they are so local, and when you've got a grandchild in the district, your heart is there.
Good, okay, all right. Trustee Calvert.
Mine are in no particular order, but I did a tin cube, and I could totally relate to what he was saying. There were a lot of issues that came, not issues, but there are a lot of classes, there were just a lot of diversity, so I did like that and the fact that he was there, and I did get to hear a couple.
And that's JG, that's JG Consulting.
Yes, and then Hazard Young, and then McPherson-Jacobson.
Okay, okay. My list, I was really impressed with the Bryan Group. The process is very powerful. I was so excited about the things they offered that included developing the search committee, team-building for the search committee, and work with the leadership team to determine the fit, because, as they said in their proposal, not everyone, no one is going to bring us everything that we want, and we want to make sure that there is a good complement of skills with our leadership team. I share the concern about the lack of specific track record with superintendent searches, and I also am concerned about the fact that they don't have an existing network of aspiring superintendent candidates to connect with, but I was really impressed with them, really liked them. I liked JG Consulting. I thought the fact that they were invested in Nevada was extremely powerful, that they have had experience here, and of course, Mr. Gata has had experience working in the state of Nevada, and I liked his sort of fire in the belly. He was very motivated to serve us. I also, my third would be Ray, just for many of the reasons that others have stated, very thorough, obviously doing a lot of things right if they get the most applicants of any other of the search firms. So, those were my three. So, the ones that I see that come up pretty, I mean, we have a lot of consistency, but it looks like Ray is on all but two, let's see, Ray is on Nathan's, Angie's, Molina's, Scott's, and mine.
President Simon.
Pardon me?
Sorry. I did a tally for you if it's helpful.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Hazard Young, Atiya, JG Consulting, and Ray and Associates all got five votes each.
Okay, thank you. I was less enthusiastic about Hazard and McPherson just because their processes were very standard to me, and it didn't excite me. I think they can probably do a great job, but I didn't hear exciting things. I heard, you know, pretty standard processes. So, Hazard wasn't on my list, and I know that McPherson was not on your five tally. So, the ones that got fives were JG and Ray, is that correct?
Yep, Hazard, JG, and Ray.
Okay, okay. Comments, discussion?
JG was strong with, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. JG was strong with me as well, so I can certainly see that was kind of between them and McPherson and Jacobson, so I could certainly see that they would still be around for the next wave, if you will. Now, it's our step from those three, so.
Vice President Raymond.
Well, and I have to say, I think in kind of coming up with my ranking, I didn't consider too, or put too much weight into the cost, but I do think it's something that we have to talk about in the final selection process, and I think for me, that was something I thought about, and McPherson was in my top three, but actually, really just had a top two, and I added a third one. I liked them all, but I should have just, because I do think that, you know, I was impressed with, I think, both JG, I mean, yeah, JG Consulting and Ray Associates seemed to be able to offer a lot of what we would benefit from and need at a price that seemed to come in a little lower than like Hazard, Young, and some of the others, so.
I also appreciated the flexibility, really, that most of the proposers presented, and I think if there were things, parts of processes that we felt strongly about, that we felt were important to us, that whoever we pick of those two would be willing to tailor some of their, some of their processes. For example, the work with the leadership team and, you know, work with a search committee. I think those are really valuable contributions that the Bryan Group could have made with us. I hope that if we don't pick the Bryan Group, we will have them work with us on other things, because I think they have a tremendous amount to offer our district in terms of taking us to another level and visionary thinking, and, you know, I don't want our, the firm we select to just be, "Yeah, we've done twelve-hundred of these, and here's the twelve-hundred and first one." Other comments? Jackie, Ellen, Scott? We're, it sounds like we're down to JG and Ray. Is that kind of where we are? Okay. Any comments either way between the two of those? It's a tough choice. That's a very tough choice. Nathan, did you have something you were thinking?
Yes, I echo President Simon Holland's sentiments about wanting to import parts of the Bryan process that I particularly liked. One thing that stood out to me, at least, was the fact they do the guided storytelling interview, which I think gives a little bit of insight into the person's judgment. I think ultimately, we're hiring someone in part for their experience and their work and the capacities they bring as leader, but also, really, their judgment and how they react under pressure with changing circumstances. I think that'd be a valuable thing to include.
Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I was just looking at the references, specifically now for Ray and Associates and JG Consulting, and it kind of stands out to me that the references for JG, and these are people that have worked with them in the past through superintendent searches, the references for JG seem really passionate about the success that they had and the working with them. You know, they, things like, "They did an exceptional job," and definitely, and there's exclamation points, and so I like the fact that the references were really excited about talking about JG, whereas Ray and Associates, the references say good things about them, but it doesn't seem to jump out at me quite as much as the one for JG. So, again, this is so tough, because they are both really good firms, and, you know, thanks a lot, Emily, for bringing us such good people that makes it hard to decide, but I guess I would have to say I'm leaning a little bit more towards JG Consulting.
Okay. Okay, Jackie?
I would concur with Mr. Kelly. I just feel that they have a lot of things that they could bring to our district to make it a better district, and hopefully, the superintendent will be able to do that as well.
Okay. Is anybody ready for a motion? We'll see how it flies. I know, I know. Vice President Raymond is, yep. Go ahead. No, she didn't want to make a motion. She's squirming, because she's uncomfortable with having to pick between these two very fine firms. Yes, yes. Well, squirming wasn't my best vocabulary, but.
Okay, well, I'll take a stab at it, see what happens. So, I move that the Board of Trustees choose JG Consulting in support of the superintendent search and provide approval to staff to enter into contract with them, not to exceed a total amount of $100,000.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Trustee Minetto, I think, was first? Okay, so motion by Trustee Kelly, second by Trustee Minetto. Is there further discussion? I think, I know, this is a very difficult choice. I really, again, I appreciate the investment they're making in the next generation of leaders, and I think they have done a great deal of work to connect with people who are aspiring superintendents and the people who are movers and shakers that are diverse. They obviously are very well-connected in Cube and in ALAS and other areas, so I am fully supportive of the motion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Well, thank you, colleagues. That was a difficult choice and very exciting, and I know, Emily, you'll get in touch with them, and we'll get started. Okay.
Emily, thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me go back to my agenda. Do we have, we need to ask for closing public comment. We have no public comment? Okay, we will close our work session.